Call the meeting to order at 3:00 P. M. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Here.
Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Here.
Trustee Wagen.
Here.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
And Dr. Smith.
Here.
All right, we move to adoption of the agenda, but we are going to amend the adoption of the agenda based on staff recommendations. So I move, can I ask for a motion to adopt the agenda with 20 D. 2 polled based on staff recommendation?
Would you say that?
Could you say the number again?
Twenty D. 2.
D. 2.
On staff recommendation.
Is that the only one?
Correct.
I move that we approve the agenda minus twenty D. 2.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Metoyer, seconded by trustee Anderson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Okay, community input on closed session items. Do we have any community input? Okay. All right, we will now move to closed session. The items are 4A conference with legal counsel, claim 511-505, 4B conference with labor negotiator, 4C public employee discipline dismissal release employment, 4D and 4 through 4F, public employee discipline dismissal release employment case numbers 202207, 202208, and 2022010, and 4G student discipline. We will return to open session at 6:00 P. M. We move to closed session at 3:02 P. M. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. Opening ceremonies, moment of reflection, pledge of allegiance led by our student org member Marcelina.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Some report out from closed session. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the retirement agreement and general release number 202207HR. The roll call was as follows, seven ayes, zero noes. Additionally, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the settlement agreement number 202208HR. The roll call vote was as follows, seven ayes, zero noes. And finally, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to ratify resolution number 14122 related to compulsory leave of absence for number 2022010HR. The roll call vote was as follows, seven ayes, zero noes. With that, I move to adoption of the minutes 10:25:22. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Metoyer, seconded by trustee Anderson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Okay, with that, it is my pleasure to move to our recognition. So we're going to start by reading the text of our retirement starfish award. Every day, an old man walked the beach with a pail, picking up starfish that had been washed in by the tide and throwing them back into the sea. One day, a young boy stopped the old man and asked, "Why do you throw the starfish back? It doesn't matter. They will only wash up on the shore again tomorrow." The old man picked up starfish up out of his pail and threw it as far as he could into the sea and replied, "It mattered to that one." So that is our pleasure to give this starfish awards to trustee Karen Yelsey and trustee And at this time, if any board members would wish to make a few comments or any staff, now's the time to do so. Trustee Wagen.
Well, I just wanted to say to trustee Metoyer and trustee Yelsey, thank you so much for your service. I see you guys up here, and you know, before I was even on the board, I was watching you and seeing how much courage you guys have to do the business of the district, especially in times of, you know, COVID where it was just really a difficult time to try to figure out what to do with our kids, what to do with our schools. And, you know, that was some great leadership that you guys had. But more importantly, I've been on the board now for two years, and I don't know how you guys have done it for eight years and 16 years. It is not an easy job. And I just look at you guys, and I know that they call Margaret Thatcher the iron lady, but I think you two are pretty much the iron ladies as well. So thank you for everything.
Trustee Crane.
Okay, thank you. Servant leadership, it is not for everyone. It takes courage, dedication, sacrifice. And as I look into the audience, I see families, I see husbands, I see daughters, sons, that basically have given their moms to service. And they have sacrificed a lot. And so we want to thank the families that are here today and the friends who have actually given us these wonderful women, empowered women for all these years. That's one. So thank you to you for being here and recognizing. Servant leadership is also for the community. The community also was served so well by these two amazing women. And when you're on the inside, looking at the work, the hard work, it's always amazing to me how you can last all these years and do it with such pride and class and grace and poise and, again, passion. And I know why, because people always ask, "Why do we do this? It's not for the money, all right? They do it because they care about kids, they know that their North Star is the students, and most of all, they believe in the institution of our public education system. And for that, I am completely and utterly grateful for all you have done for us, and we're going to miss you.
I'll go. I just wanted to thank both of you, Charlene and Karen, for, in so many ways, taking me under your wing these last four years and for showing me how to be a brave leader, but also a leader who looks at the whole district. I've heard so many people say that you two are at more plays and sporting events than their own parents are. And it's really true. You guys are always out in the community, you're always talking to students, you're inspiring to students, and I see that. And it's been, you've been great role models in that way and inspired me to attend a lot more elementary school plays. And so I've learned so much from just that heart that you have for all students and just the appreciation you have for everyone's growth and from kindergarten all the way through graduation. It's been remarkable and inspiring, and we're going to miss you. So now I'm going to present the Board's Distinguished Service Award to Charlene Metoyer. Resolution of the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board of Education honoring Charlene Metoyer with the Distinguished Service Award. Whereas Charlene Metoyer has served the Newport Mesa Unified School District Governing Board since 2014, in addition to 24 years of service as an employee of the district at various schools and several capacities, including elementary principal, administrative intern, and classroom teacher; and whereas during her eight-year tenure with the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board of Education, which included terms as clerk, vice president, and president, Charlene Metoyer has served the Board of Education with the highest of standards, known for her integrity, work ethic, leadership, dedication, compassion, and whereas Charlene Metoyer has given unselfishly of her time assistance at every level of the organization through service on many educational organizations, committees, and civic activities such as the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly and Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce Education Committee, Board Policy Review Team, and Special Education Advisory Committee; and whereas Charlene Metoyer wholeheartedly embraces her loyal local community and has championed increased collaboration between the district, city, and youth groups through her involvement in the Costa Mesa Youth Sports Council and the Newport Mesa Unified School District City of Costa Mesa District Liaison Group in order to best support and foster recreational opportunities for students and families; and whereas Charlene Metoyer has fully supported the modernization and improvements of school facilities district-wide that enhance the learning environment for all students; and whereas Charlene Metoyer provided mentorship, fostered knowledge of governance and leadership principles, and promoted student voices as the board liaison to the 2021 and 2022 student board members; and whereas Charlene Metoyer has been an enthusiastic advocate for arts and enrichment opportunities in the district and serves on the Newport Mesa Arts Commission; and whereas, as a result of the exemplary contributions of Charlene Metoyer and her dedication and honorable service to the Newport Mesa Unified School District, the students, families, staff, community, and the Board of Education have greatly benefited; and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District presents Charlene Metoyer with the Newport Mesa Unified School District's Distinguished Service Award for her outstanding contributions to the district and that by this proclamation, Charlene Metoyer will carry with her the best wishes of the Board of Education and of the district for continued happiness and great success in her future endeavors. Presented, signed, and approved the 15th day of November 2022 at a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District.
Ooh, ooh, stop. Start the show. Yes. It's a puzzle. Oh, that's a city. Ooh, that's, it's pretty. Thank you, thank you to the city of Costa Mesa. I'm very, very proud of our partnership. I just want to thank everyone here, everyone on the board. It was not a lifelong dream for me to sit on the board. I thought when I retired from being a principal that I could be a retiree, and I failed retirement. And I failed it again, but that's okay. Everything we do is because of public education, which raises citizens to take care of the world when we're not in it anymore. This is such an important thing. I wholeheartedly stand by public education, and when you work for a district like Newport Mesa, it's easy to do that. I'm sorry, I don't choke up, and this is really getting to me. Thank you so much. I thought I'd be cheering all the way out the door. Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Board, for all the work that we've done together. And students, you're wowing. I like being vice president. Thank you. Ooh, another one. Ooh, bonus. I'm going to have to get wall space. Oh, thank you, Cotty.
I think those are all from different levels of government, right?
Yes, yes. Do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Or just say?
You can.
I will be happy to. This proclamation is from a certificate of recognition from our Assemblywoman, Cotty Petri Norris. On behalf of the California State Assembly, thank you for your service to the Newport Mesa Board of Education and for 24 years of employment with the school district. We commend you for your exemplary contributions to the community, and congratulations on receiving the Distinguished Service Award, and we wish you the utmost success for the future. That's really pretty. I'm going to have to make, we have to make wall space. Yes. And the proclamation is a big, this is a big whereas, and it's a lot of the same whereas as were already said, but it ends up with, "I, John Stevens, Mayor of the City of Costa Mesa, do hereby proclaim this special commendation to Charlene for her outstanding contributions to the district and the Costa Mesa community." So thank you very much for the service.
Thank you. And now it is my pleasure to give the Board's Distinguished Service Award to Karen Yelsey. So, resolution of the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board of Education honoring Karen Yelsey with the Distinguished Service Award. Whereas Karen Yelsey has served the Newport Mesa Unified School District since 2006, and whereas during her 16-year tenure with the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board of Education, including three terms as the president, Karen Yelsey has served the Board of Education with the highest of standards, known for her integrity, work ethic, leadership, dedication, compassion, and whereas Karen Yelsey has unselfishly given of her time and assistance at every level of the organization through service on many educational organizations, committees, and groups such as the College and Career Education Advisory Council, Superintendent Student Advisory, Harbor Council PTA, and several district PTAs; and whereas Karen Yelsey was awarded the Golden Oak Award by Corona del Mar High School's PTA for exemplary honorary service, highlighting her passion, enthusiasm, and commitment to her local community; and whereas Karen Yelsey has fully supported the modernization and improvements of school facilities district-wide that enhance the learning environment for all students; and whereas Karen Yelsey has been a strong advocate for meaningful communication and student mental health and wellness throughout the district and community; and whereas Karen Yelsey wholeheartedly embraces her local community through her many civic activities such as the Newport Beach Youth Council and NMUSD/City of Newport Beach Liaison Group; and whereas as a result of the exemplary contributions of Karen Yelsey and her dedication and honorable service to the Newport Mesa Unified School District, the students, families, staff, community, and the Board of Education have greatly benefited; and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District presents Karen Yelsey with Newport Mesa's Unified School District's Distinguished Service Award for her outstanding contributions to the district, and that by this proclamation, Karen Yelsey will carry with her the best wishes of the Board of Education and of the district for continued happiness and great success in her future endeavors. Presented, signed, and approved the 15th day of November 2022 at a regular board meeting of the Education of Newport, of the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School
I have the same, well, a different proclamation from the city of Newport Beach, signed by Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of Newport Beach, which is very lovely. And the proclamation with whereas from the city of Costa Mesa as well, with all the whereas, signed by John Stevens, Mayor of Costa Mesa. And you do need a lot of wall space. I have a lot of kid artwork in my house now. I don't know if I'll be able to find room here. Certificate of Recognition from Assemblymember Cotty Petri Norris. Thank you all. I really appreciate it. It's all lovely. And of course, this starfish award, which was read tonight, but it's really important, and I think it's something that we all live by. So I just appreciate all of you. It's been great. I feel like the really old person on this board, having seen him for so long with a really relatively new board. And they are amazing, and they're, I don't know if they're still here, but at dinner there were some members of the school board that I've served with in the past. And I've had 16 wonderful years of serving with a variety of different people, and we all have the same thing in common, what's best for the kids of Newport Mesa. I was not in education. I started out as a parent with three kids who went through our public school system. And it was really important for my husband and I that our kids go to public school when we moved to California, and we wanted to help make them better. And so I worked in the schools when my kids were in there, and then randomly got into going down and putting my name in to run for school board, never thinking I would serve for 16 years. It wasn't a long-term thought that I had in mind. But once I got here, there were so many wonderful things about this district that I hadn't known just as a parent, but becoming involved in various areas and getting to know the people who work here, not just the people in this room or the people who have come before you in this room, but the teachers and the people at the schools and the classified people. Stu Tedford already told me that he was buying my ticket to the state of the school's breakfast next year, so I can listen to his speech again, and I'm taking him up on that. But it's actually been wonderful just knowing the people, and that's the thing I'm going to miss most. And somebody asked me yesterday if I felt good about retiring, and I said, "You know, I do feel good because I found a really good replacement." And I am so thrilled that there is someone who's been elected, Lisa Pearson, who is here in the room, who I know will continue on my legacy and move forward and really work amazingly well with the board members that are still here. And that just makes me feel so comfortable about leaving and feeling that I did my job. So it's been, other than my family, life events, this has been the most rewarding experience of my life, and I've enjoyed every minute of it as I look back. It's kind of like childbirth, though. If somebody says, "Well, what about COVID?" Okay, there was COVID, but there were also good parts of that. So really, I want to thank everybody and just share my appreciation for all of you in this room who help provide for our kids every day, because I know it's not always easy.
And you have one more from, a proclamation from the county of Orange from Supervisor Foley's office.
Oh, thank you.
So there you go.
Thank you so much. Oh, my God. There she is.
And there she is. There she is.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Should we get a picture with these?
Do you want a picture?
Sure. You want a picture?
Definitely.
You brought them?
We should all come down. But let me pass the resolutions first.
Oh. We have to pass a resolution first.
So with that, we're going to adopt resolution number 11-11-22, Distinguished Service Award, Charlene Metoyer. May I have a motion?
I move to do so.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Orsoilu. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Do I get to vote? Because it's yes. If I don't, if I don't get to, I abstain. Thank you.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
All right, and then we move to 11B, adopt resolution number 12-11-22, Distinguished Service Award for Karen Yelsey. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Crane, seconded by-
Wagen.
Oh, Wagen, I'm sorry. Everyone gets their names in there. Moved by trustee Wagen, seconded by trustee Anderson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes. Photo ops.
With just, with this one with Katrina.
Whatever our PI board directs us to do.
Yes.
Take as many as you can carry.
Take as many as you can. Take all your-
Put them on the ledge. We can pass it to-
Oh, on this ledge. Want to carry them?
I got to serve with both these amazing women, so it's wonderful that you all serve and care so much about our kids.
All of us?
Which made the whole board.
Scott, don't let them up there.
I have to say, the pilot's camera sounds so old.
Now we move to-
One more round of applause.
And now we move to 11C, adopt resolution number 10-11-22, electing to become subject to the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, Public Contract Code Section 22000 ET sequence. So moved? It's been moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Metoyer. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
And now we move to 11D, adopt resolution number 13-11-12, to approve agreement FCI-SD4-17, amendment number two with the Children and Families Commission of Orange County for 2020 through 2024. Mr. Drake?
Yes, this is a resolution for early childhood education act in partnering with this commission and asking you to please approve the resolution.
Thank you.
So moved?
It's been moved by trustee Anderson and seconded by trustee Metoyer. Roll call vote.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
As a county commissioner, I'm going to abstain.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we move to student board member reports.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. As you, as I already said, that working with the student board members is so rewarding because they are examples of our phenomenal success with a wonderful place for kids to learn. The topic for this week was, "How is your school or classmates demonstrating gratitude this month with Thanksgiving in mind?" And Marcelina, you may start us off. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Barto, and members of the board. My name is Marcelina Sanchez, the early college high school representative. To start off, my school had a Let's Be Kind Day on November 10th. This was a great day to demonstrate how grateful we are for the opportunities we get in school. We had fun activities, and it was great, it was a great way to bond with other students on campus. This week, we are having kindness week. On Monday, we wore hats. Yesterday, we wore PJs. Today, we had hippie day, or tomorrow, we're having hippie day. And we're going to have complimentary colors. And finally, Friday, we will end the week with our Kajabi Can Can House Comp. Having kindness week at ECHS isn't just about dressing up, which is fun, but about doing random acts of kindness on and off of campus. It is an opportunity to give thanks to the people that have helped us the most. Thank you. Thank you.
Ethan Cowes, representing Cloud Campus.
Superintendent Smith, President Bartow, for my answer, my school showed gratitude this month by having a kindness week. Last Monday, there was Let's Be Kind Day, Let's Be Nice kickoff party, where there were games and pizza at Cloud Campus so the students could meet new people and socialize. On Tuesday, we had a kindness challenge to practice positivity by writing notes of gratitude to family, friends, and teachers. On Wednesday, kids played a kindness bingo game. And finally, on Thursday, kids showed gratitude by giving their thanks to teachers and students on Zoom.
Thank you. Isabella Mills from Costa Mesa High School.
Good evening, President Bartow, Superintendent, Board, and Cabinet. My name is Isabella Mills, and I'm the Costa Mesa High School Student Representative. Costa Mesa High School Student Body and respective administration are demonstrating gratitude this month through a number of activities and events. A few years ago, Costa Mesa High School student Rebecca Robek started a Let's Be Kind Day, handing out shirts with this motto to the entire student body. This day's purpose is to highlight the importance of gratitude as well as small acts of kindness. This week, we continue this tradition in the form of Spread the Love Week. Our A S B students worked tirelessly over this past weekend, creating a plethora of motivating posters bearing phrases such as "treat people with kindness" and "spread love." Alternately, an all-staff gathering took place yesterday hosted by the school administration. The gathering included refreshments and demonstrated the school's gratitude towards staff for getting through the mid-year WASC. Our school counselors have also experienced heightened and authentic appreciation from the student body as seniors begin finalizing and submitting their applications. To conclude, this month is full of gratitude towards one another at Costa Mesa High School. However, through experience, this gratitude extends throughout the entire school year at Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're ready for the Harbor Council P T A report. Cynthia Strassman.
Good evening and happy Thanksgiving, Madam President, Superintendent, Board, and Cabinet. I have two updates to share with you tonight. One is our Council P T A Reflections Art Reception is this Thursday in the Sanborn Assembly Room here at the district. The reception is from 5:00 to 7:00 P. M. All are welcome to attend. I wanted to share that we had 20, 20 schools participate this year, not bad from coming off of COVID, right? Lots of engagement happening. And of from those 20 schools, we had 519 student entries.
Wow.
So quite impressive. So we are excited to see what the, you know, students created on Thursday. All are welcome. So I encourage all of you to attend, even here, community members behind me. The second update is the Council P T A is hosting a Holiday Hope Food Donation Drive, and this is aimed at helping with food insecurity in our neighborhoods and our communities. So we are collecting food and basic need items until December 14th. These items will be delivered to someone who carries soup kitchen. I did a little digging. They serve over 300 people daily and including children, and that's why we saw, we've identified this particular soup kitchen. So for those who are interested in participating, please see me after the meeting, and I can provide further details about what specific items and how to, you know, deliver or we can pick up, so.
And also, people can volunteer there on Thanksgiving.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then thank you for bringing that up, because I spoke with the owner, Terry. Her mother started the soup kitchen way back in the day, and she said that there's also opportunities for students and parents and community members to volunteer for their big meal, which is on December 23rd from 11:00 to 2:00. And they also, they serve about 700 people in the community around that timeframe, so we hope you consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have C S E A and N M F T Presidents' Comments. We'll have C S E A Representative Eleanor Reebard.
President Bartow, Board, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and guests. On behalf of Stu Tedford, the interim president of Newport Mesa, Chapter 18, we'd like to acknowledge and thank our two retiring school board members, Shar and Karen. I've been to a lot of meetings, so Shar has worn many hats, as was explained in the proclamation. And if there was an average of 20 school board meetings a year, she's attended 306, no, 160. And Karen, with the 16 years, it's double that, 320.
Whoa.
So it's school board meetings, special meetings. Both Karen and Shar have attended numerous drama productions, musicals, plays, handed out certificates to C I F winners throughout the years and graduations. So we'd like to wish you both the best of everything in the days ahead and know that you now have Tuesday nights free. So, and we'd also like to acknowledge the newly elected school board members that are here. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have N M F T President Rhonda Reed.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Bartow, Cabinet, and guests here tonight. I want to extend my gratitude to Superintendent Smith, Assistant Superintendent Olson for expediting my transition. So this week was my first two-fold days at the union, so much appreciate being able to focus on one job and really provide our members the support they deserve. I understand there's a candidate, my replacement, is working their way through the hiring process. I understand they come with a wealth of experience, a talented counselor, that my, I'm reassured that my caseload will be in great hands. I do want to say it's been a joy to work at C D M. The students are some of the kindest, brightest, most generous teenagers I've ever met with lovely families, so thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to Community Input on Non-Agendized Items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on a regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By order of the Brown Act, Section 549, 54.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
Thank you. First, we have Cynthia Strassman, then Lynn Mitchell, and then Yasmin Kalal.
Hello again. I'm wearing a different hat. This one is a community member. I had the pleasure of attending the Arts Coordinator Panel sponsored by the O C D E on November 3rd. After listening to this enlightening discussion, it was, it brought up some questions on how we handle arts in Newport Mesa. Many of our districts in the area mention arts coordinators and TOSSAs in their L cap or L C F F plan. Our latest plan mentions a TOSA for elementary music but does not mention a K through 12 arts TOSA, which I believe we currently have. Will there be any way to clarify this role in our next L C F F plan? And thanks to the many funding opportunities from the state, many districts in our area are concentrating on arts leadership roles to aid with decision-making and expertise in the implementation of arts plans. Do we have any arts experts in our higher-level administration meetings to aid with these decisions? If not, we would love to see that in our arts departments, just as you have done with extended learning in other departments. Overall, we are excited about the possibilities of elevating our arts and look forward to these types of investments in our programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lynn Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Mitchell, and I'm here to represent the classified staff members who are back here, if you could stand. They have gathered signatures for the Summer Assistance Program, the Summer Saver Program. It's a program where the state matches dollar per dollar the amount that we put into the Summer Saver Program. We would like for the district to reconsider opting into the program. The match is granted through the state. The school district does not have to put any money in. It's just a matter of opting in. And we have now 180 signatures on a petition, and we are going to continue to collect. Our wonderful union is supporting us and has been helping us with this effort, and so I thank you for this time, and I would like to congratulate Karen and Charlene. Charlene, I worked with you when I first started here 15 years ago, and I am just so proud of you. Thank you, and thank you, Karen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Yasmin Kalal and Ella Avital. Sorry, followed by Ella Avital.
Hi, everyone. My name is Yasmin Kalal, and I'm a senior at Corona Del Mar High School. And today, I want to talk about the accessibility of menstrual products at school. On average, a teenage girl will have her period for a total of 84 days per year. On these 84 days of unpredictability, a painful range of symptoms, and constant discomfort, girls are expected to act as they normally would any other day, except it's not any other day. It's a day when women have different sanitary needs at school, at home, and wherever they may go. It's a day where a history lesson can become tuned out by that anxious feeling that you'll need to figure out how you're going to get a tampon or pad before going to the bathroom. Maybe I have one in my locker. What if when I stand up, my pants will be stained? Maybe I should ask this girl next to me if she has one. But what if people hear? What if my teacher gets upset that I'm talking in class? I'm confident that any female student in the audience, that to any female student in the audience, these questions are unfortunately extremely familiar. As part of my AP Research class junior year, I was prompted to write a research paper and conduct a study that answers the question of my choosing. Mine was, has a lack of access to free menstrual products in C D M restrooms caused a stigma surrounding periods? I reflected on my personal experiences at school and the feeling I had every time I walked into the bathroom, past the tampon and pad dispensers that since the day they were installed, read empty. I thought back to every time I had hoped that they had been stocked, sometimes even wishfully pressing the dispenser button. In order to come to a conclusion and answer my research question, I conducted a two-part mixed-method study in which I quantified how long female students spent trying to find a tampon or pad during a class period and followed up with a qualitative survey. The results showed overwhelmingly that female students felt that the entire process of having to acquire a menstrual product during class caused high levels of anxiety, stress, embarrassment, and shame, and overall discomfort, which, as determined in my literature review, are signs of the existence of stigma. I found that 19 out of 25 participants had to ask four or more students for a tampon or pad during class, and two out of 25 students had to ask for a nurse's pass before getting a tampon or pad. The average time spent attempting to acquire a menstrual product was over 15 minutes. This is time out of students' learning taken away to accommodate for our schools' incompetence and the inability to accommodate for basic feminine needs. This brings me to why I'm speaking to you all today. In my research, I came across a recently passed bill titled Assembly Bill 367, which states existing law requires a public school maintaining any combination of classes from grade six to 12 inclusive that meets a 40% pupil poverty threshold specified in federal law to stock 50% of school restrooms with feminine hygiene products. In Section 3, it states the implementation of such measures must occur on or before the start of the 2022-2023 school year, and yet nothing at C D M has changed. If any of the girls' bathrooms include a tampon or pad dispensers, they are either consistently empty or have non-working coin slots that eat up spare change. On behalf of all C D M students, we are sick of our school's failure to meet our men, to not meet our menstrual needs and demand that in compliance with Assembly Bill 367, our restrooms are consistently stocked.
Next, we have Ella Avital.
Can I set this here? Is that okay?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Hello, my name is Ella Avital, and I'm a senior at Corona Del Mar High School. I'd like to tell you about an experience I had a few weeks ago. It was a Monday, and I'd come to school with the knowledge that I'd be taking my AP Macroeconomics final exam. 60 minutes to answer 60 questions, one question for a minute. I'd been preparing for weeks with the hope that I'd score well on the exam. I entered the class, tests are handed out, and we begin. About 35 minutes into the exam, I need to use the restroom. It's not ideal, and I'm running behind. I've only completed 27 of the 60 questions. I have 33 questions left in only 25 minutes, and I need to go to the bathroom. I figure I can use the restroom in less than two minutes and be back in a timely manner, so I ask my teacher, and I'm out the door. 30 seconds to the bathroom. I get to the stall and realize that not only did I have to pee, but I've started my period. A minute gone, I check the feminine product dispenser in the bathroom, and unsurprisingly, it's empty, just like it has been for the entirety of my high school career. A minute 15 seconds goes by, and I lose time for my test. There are a few options that I could use to mitigate the damage to my cream-colored sweatpants. My school keeps pads in the nurse's office. I could go there, but that would mean 10 minutes lost and 10 questions gone. I can't go back to class and retrieve provisions from my backpack, because not only will that take too much time, but it's also likely that I won't be allowed to leave class again after returning once. I've been gone from class for four minutes now. That's four less test questions answered. Maybe I can find a friend and ask for a pad, but I left my phone in class, and I don't have time to wander the halls looking for a saving grace. Six minutes, six questions gone. I check the dispenser again, hoping for a miracle, to no avail. Defeated, I reenter the stall, compensating for my lack of a pad or tampon with toilet paper. I wash my hands, as well as anyone can wash their hands without soap or paper towels, which is an entirely different issue that I don't have time to address but should be noted, and go back to class and finish my test. With the lost time, I rapidly guess six questions and leave seven blank, a total of 13 questions that I very likely got wrong. Final grades are posted, and I got a 45 out of 60, a C. I studied for weeks only to get a C. I finished a class that I had worked hard in all semester with a B because my school wasn't properly equipping me with the necessary health provisions I needed. Students at C D M experience this, or this, experience some version or variation of this issue every day. We haven't had access to pads or tampons in restrooms in over a year, and this directly goes against Assembly Bill 367, which requires all public schools serving students in grade six to 12 to stock restrooms with an adequate supply of free menstrual products commencing in the 2022-23 school year. We're three months into the 22-23 school year, and nothing's changed. Even when the products were available to us, they were, we received dated products of poor quality that don't provide the proper security, comfort, or discretion that students deserve. I'm calling on the N M U S D Board and administrators to properly and thoroughly address the poor and greatly lacking supplies given to its menstruating students on a daily basis, and I would be more than happy to get into contact with any one of you to start solving this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Superintendent's comments.
Yeah, arts in the district, it's exciting, some new state monies. It's also exciting that we have a district here and a board that supports the arts as they do. So you look around districts all around the state. We do so much more than many, but there are, there's more we can do. I'm also really excited with Tamara Fairbanks and the job that she does, helping lead that work. I just had a chance recently to attend the Arts Commission and hear from experts throughout the district and their plans for how best to utilize those resources so they can present that to the board. And correcting the L C F F L cap handbook, absolutely, but this is definitely a commitment of this board. There's more we're going to do in that regard, and that's exciting for students. As it relates to the menstrual products, I wouldn't say there's any clarification that needs to be made. Once again, our students are articulate, they're passionate, they do a great job, they make us proud every time they come here. I said recently that we have a professional obligation and moral one as well to make sure that every student in this district is heard, seen, and valued. You have people in the room, students, who it's their job to fix these things, they've heard you, and now they're going to get on it so that we can demonstrate that you're not only heard, but you're valued. So appreciate their feedback and input.
Thank you. And now we move to Community Input on Agendized Items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the Discussion Action Calendar may be held until that item is considered by the board, if the speaker prefers.
We're going to start with Ruth Kobayashi, and then Anne Yelsey, and then Rachel Krebs.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Sanchez Kobayashi. Mrs. Matoye and Mrs. Yelsey, thank you both for your years of dedication to the students in this district. Your impact has reached so many children. You both- You both did something so admirable in stepping up to leadership, not to launch another career or to address any particular agenda. You did it for that one child, whose life you might impact forever. That's really what it's about, isn't it? That one child. There are so many of them, thousands really. But you look at it as that one child whose life direction your work might impact. I've got two of those children, two different types of learners, two different types of careers now. The one who liked school, who was gifted in her own way, but often felt less than because she took no AP courses. And the other one, whose school came easier to and took plenty of AP courses. Both are thriving early in their careers because their high school prepared them for college and career. One works for ESPN and the other at a leading global PR and marketing agency. Mrs. Matoye, by attending school board meetings, I got to see your leadership style. Collaborative, inquisitive, humble, humorous, and always looking for the good in any situation. And you know how to have fun. You always know how to make those around you feel like they matter and feel the warmth of your very sunshiny soul. You take your role seriously, but you never forget how to lighten things up, and this is a gift. Mrs. Yelsey, since your trusty area is where my girls went to high school, I got to see you even more up close and personal. From the day we came to CDM from a local private school, I saw you at every single PTA meeting, evening event, athletic contest, and saw your deep understanding of our community. You met with everyone who ever wanted to talk to you. You built relationships with students, teachers, coaches, and parents, civic leaders, and you always listened generously. We live in very interesting times, where it's hard to imagine that one person can really make a difference. I can tell you that your leadership has made a difference, a significant difference. Your leadership had an impact on thousands of students, including mine, on their success, but more importantly, on their character. Mrs. Matoye and Mrs. Yelsey, a grateful community thanks you.
Next, we have Anne Yelsey and Rachel Krebs.
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Barto, and members of the board. I'm honored and proud to be here tonight, speaking with my sister Rachel and on behalf of my brother Josh, at the last board meeting ever for Karen Yelsey, also known as Mom. Karen has been a community servant to the greater Newport area for over 30 years. She moved here with my dad in 1978, after both had completed their MBA programs at Wharton. In 1993, she left a successful career to be more involved in the school district. Her first leadership role was organizing the 1994 Spirit Run, which raised money for local elementary schools. She would go on to hold nearly every PFO and PTA leadership role at Lincoln Elementary and Corona Del Mar High School. As a volunteer, she was instrumental in helping CDM become recognized as a California Distinguished School and National Blue Ribbon School. She did all this while raising three kids, who matriculated through the Newport Mesa Public Schools, and would go on to graduate from Yale, Stanford, and Harv-
Yale, Stanford, and Penn, sorry.
The Daily Pilot wrote of Mom's candidacy in 2006. If someone with Karen Yelsey's background and experience wants to serve on the school board, we should select her.
Her accomplishments in partnership with her fellow board trustees during her 16 years are too numerous to name in our allotted time. Perhaps her greatest challenge came over the past two and a half years during COVID. And during the entire school shutdown and reopening process, she fielded calls, emails, complaints-
[laughter]
And threats from any parent who reached out and never made political judgments or decisions. No parent's voices were censored at all. Ultimately, Newport Mesa schools were among the first in California to return to in-person learning. Our family would sometimes ask her, why do you put yourself through this? This was never about political advancement or community status to Mom. And the answer was always she cared too much about the community. Besides, her grandkids and my two kids will one day matriculate through Newport Mesa Schools in the next few years. There's no doubt she is leaving the district in a better place than she found it. The facilities and the learning opportunities available to all students are miles ahead of the district my siblings and I graduated from 20 years ago.
You can claim her.
The entire community is better for her service to it. Congratulations, Mom, on an incredible career and service to your community.
Next, we have Martha Flor.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, President Barto, and distinguished board members and former colleagues. My name is Martha Hu. I am so pleased that this board is honoring the two finest board members I've had the privilege to work with, Charlene Matoye and Karen Yelsey. Both of these women have been avid supporters, and I would actually say rabid supporters, of the schools in their zones, as well as all the schools in Newport Mesa Unified. They've attended, I believe, every single Battle of the Bay, every single Battle of the Bell since elected, and even before that. They have shaken the hands of thousands of high school graduates. They established the Cloud Campus, supported the expansion of mental and emotional health services, all the while never wavering on the principles of good governance and doing what is right for all our students and their families. Karen, since you were elected in 2004, you've modeled leadership, grace, compassion, and patience, from the CDM seventh-grade enclave to Coach Sumner Track as your final act. You steadfastly led the way to reopen our schools as quickly and as safely as possible in the fall of 2021. Thank you for all the emails, the thousands of phone calls, and the meetings you held during the height of the COVID and beyond. I believe every single member that's sitting at this table, you have been involved in hiring. Every single one. Not to mention the countless principals that you have had the privilege and the superintendents prior to Dr. Smith. Shar, I can remember when I hired you. You were our first Arnold Beckman science. Before that, you were an adult ed. But then we hired you as a principal at East Fluff. And since then, you have, as you said, served ably. You've served interim at Polerino, at Sonora, East Fluff, Adult Ed, and ended up at Harview, and then you retired. And then you came back. As you said, you have, you've become. And again, you have worked to open up the Costa Mesa Enclave, the Arts Theater, and the additional sceneings at Corona Del Mar Mustangs Field as your final act. I count you both as my dearest friends, and I wish you well in the land of Whoville.
Next, we have two comments on 19A. You have the opportunity to speak now, or you can speak right before the item. We have an item before then. Rebecca Sinclair and Haley Jenkins, would you like to speak now, or would you like to speak before the item?
Someone said no.
Okay, Rebecca, and then Haley. Thank you.
Which topic? 19A.
Hi, my name's Becca, and I am the proud mom of three Anderson Dolphins. I also have a little guy who is scheduled to graduate in 2038.
Wow.
So like you all here, I have a very vested interest in the success of our students, our schools, and this district. And the reason I'm here tonight is because I want to advocate for a public comment period for new editions of textbooks, and also social and emotional curriculum and professional development programs. My husband was on the board of a nonprofit that actually developed middle school curriculum. And it was focused on significant events in our country's history and also current events. And over the past five years, we saw a lot of controversial topics come into the curriculum that was being developed through this nonprofit. And while those topics were coming in, we also saw an active effort to suppress differing viewpoints and perspectives on those events in history. And when we saw this, he resigned from the board, and we withdrew our financial support. And I'm here tonight just to tell you that this is a nationwide trend that we're seeing. It's no one's fault in this room at all. But because of this trend, because of what we have seen come into textbooks and programming, I'd love for the school board to really harness and leverage the enthusiasm that we have in our community for our education. And to draw positives out of the last few months, there's an amazing amount of viewpoint diversity in this community. And by opening the materials up for community comment, it will actually help you do a better job. You will leverage passionate parents, students, teachers to review these materials, provide their comments, and then you can make the best decision for the students and for the district. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Superintendent Smith, President Barto, and board members. I'm here again tonight to ask that you please take action and create a policy where all of you must review and approve updated and newer edition versions of textbooks before purchasing and giving them out to students. I also ask that you allow the public a period to review and make comments on these books, as you do currently, excuse me, with textbooks that are new to the curriculum. Not one of you emailed me back about my concern, and I emailed each one of you. So thank you for finally adding it to the agenda, but I'm not sure I quite understand why it's only being discussed tonight and not voted on. To me, this seems like a simple request with obvious benefits to students, parents, and taxpayers. Again, I remind everyone here that $15,819 was wasted on ordering the updated 2023 version of the comprehensive health text that's now not going to be used. I still have not heard back if the district will get their money back for that. The box was checked off that the listed materials were not controversial, and we all know how that went. Keeping parents and taxpayers in the loop by allowing them to review and comment on changes to textbooks and allowing for full transparency of anything you spend our tax money on to show or use with students would move to instill trust in the district. Currently, parents are being babysat or flat-out ignored when requesting to review items. Remember, one of your goals is to have better communication and work more with parents. Also, I feel that it's the job of the board to know what's being taught to children. Textbooks approved 15 years ago are way different from what's being put out today, and you all should know what's in them. It's highly irresponsible to put a rush on books and curriculum. The Williams Resolution should in no way hinder proper oversight on providing students with factual, age-appropriate, non-controversial materials. So simply put, anything, books, videos, programs, curriculum, should be thoroughly reviewed and approved before you purchase and show it to children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we move to 18A, School Safety Task Force update.
There we go. Good evening. Hello, President Barto, Superintendent Smith, trustees. A wonderful night to celebrate. Shar, Karen, we're so grateful for you and all of your support over the years. Thank you. My name is Sarah Colley. I'm our Administrative Director of Student Services here in Newport Mesa and have co-led the Safety Task Force with Jonathan Willoughby, who unfortunately was unable to be here tonight. I do want to introduce to you Dr. Sean Bolton, as well as Kristi Flores, who are our principals who are on the Safety Task Force. And Sean's going to start us this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Colley, and President Barto, members of the board, Superintendent Smith, Executive Cabinet, and distinguished guests. Before we start on the Safety Task Force presentation, just want to thank trustee Matoye and trustee Yelsey for all their service and all their dedication to schools for valuing site leadership, principals. And as trustee Wigan mentioned about just paralleling Margaret Thatcher's reign in England, the Iron Lady did have it tough, but I would argue that you are more like Joan of Arc. I mean, you went through the Hundred Year War the last three years, and what you went through, and just the intentionality of love and care that you provided, the educational communities that you serve is outstanding and will never be forgotten. So thank you from, and I speak on behalf of all site principals and leaders, just thanking you for your service and your dedication to schools, the district, students, and employees. So thank you. The Safety Task Force that we embarked on, I, Kristi and I just went along for the ride, really. Sarah Colley and Jonathan Willoughby did a fantastic job of forming the Safety Task Force. It's hard having open-form meetings at the four zones, where there's just a tremendous amount of input, different perspectives when it comes to something as emotionally charged a topic as school safety is, and just taking in all the input, directing and redirecting consistently throughout the four meetings. They did a phenomenal job. The Zone voice, the site voices emerged in these meetings. I feel like educational community members, employees, students, and also principals, and anyone else who attended, there were a number of former teachers and community members that also attended, that their thoughts, their voice emerged in these meetings, and all these ideas were put together, they were sorted out. Throughout the whole process, Sarah and Jonathan talked to us through phone calls, in-person meetings, Zoom meetings, where they bounced ideas off of us. But now we have actionable timelines, actionable timelines put together for the next year to put in place a lot of safety measures throughout the district. Davis Elementary and Newport Harbor High School will be piloting some of the features, seeing the viability of some of the safety features and some of the protocols, and just giving feedback consistently to the Safety Task Force, along with Sarah Colley and Jonathan Willoughby. But the process is intentional, it's clean. What's emerged is a robust plan with, again, timelines and actionable items in place, and they've done a fantastic job. And as site leaders, Kristi and I represent the principal's K-12, and in turn, we represent the employees that were tasked to keep safe, and the students that were tasked to keep safe, and the educational community members that are concerned about school safety. I feel like we have a solid plan in place. Nothing's perfect, but again, we will go through the process, go through the pilot, learn, relearn, re-implement, and implement, and it's a fantastic journey. So thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, board, for supporting this. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for supporting this, and Executive Cabinet for supporting all these different elements of the safety plan, the actionable items. It's been great. So thank you.
Thank you, Sean. So this evening, we're just going to walk you through really a comprehensive overview of the work that we've done really over the last four months, so knowing that this started in June. So at the end of the school year, school safety was set as a renewed priority by our superintendent, Dr. Smith, which we were really grateful for, to have the opportunity to really dive in deep into this work. June through August, we had our school safety planning, as well as our school safety forums that were facilitated by ZONE. And then August, September, and October, we had our School Safety Task Force meetings. So there was multiple opportunities for input, starting with our ZONE forums, as well as a virtual forum for those who were not able to attend in person. We were also able to present at our management advance, so we were able to get input from a variety of site leaders, as well as our classified leaders, which was a really great opportunity, as well as our certificated leaders, so those of us at the district office who may not be at a school site. We also had the opportunity to gather inputs specifically from our site leaders, so at our secondary and elementary principals' meeting, and that was facilitated by Sean and Kristi. So it was, again, a great opportunity to get some input from our principals. And then we had our Safety Task Force meeting. I do want to point out that you'll- I do want to point out that you'll see that we had three meetings. Originally, we had four, and this was really from the will of the group. This work was really led by the task force. We got a tremendous amount of work done, as you'll see in the next few slides, and there really was a feeling of, we don't know that there's any more for us to do at this point. And so we were wanting to be mindful of people's time, the commitments that they have to activities and their families outside of this work. And so there wasn't a need to have that final meeting in November. So as a reminder, our task force members had a variety of stakeholder groups, so there were directors from the district office, so risk management, student services, maintenance and operations were also represented. We had our Coordinator of Energy and Compliance, as well as Kristi and Sean as our principal representatives. We had representatives from NMFT, as well as CSCA. We had parents who were part of the task force, as well as students. We also had our School Resource Officer from both Costa Mesa and Newport Beach, as well as the Fire Marshals from both cities as well. So within this group, we were able to come up with this updated plan for scope of service. And I say updated because you'll notice that we really are relying on our community partners and community agencies to help us assist with doing this work. Originally, there was some talk about a contract with a consultant, and it really was the will of this task force and the will of the group to capitalize upon the expertise within Orange County and those who work with the other schools and agencies within the county. So for our comprehensive school safety plans, that'll be led by Jonathan Willoughby from Risk Management, and we'll be working in partnership with the OCDE Violence Prevention, School Safety and Emergency Preparedness Program and their program specialists there. We have our Threat Assessment Plan Review and Update. So Student Services will be working closely with the OC SMART team, which is through the Orange County Sheriff's Department to implement the C-SAG model, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a few moments. We'll have our lockdown training, which we will work in partnership with our Costa Mesa as well as Newport Beach Police Departments. We really felt that this was a critical factor, as they will be the ones who will be supporting us in any sort of critical incident. They're also on our campuses, they know our staff, and they know our communities. Our Emergency Operations Center, so working with Risk Management to update our EOC manual and provide some additional training and refresh as we've come out of COVID, really making this a priority to make sure that our Emergency Operations Center is running at its highest level. And then lastly, our physical security assessment, so we'll be working with the Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center, or OKAC, to help us with these assessments. So as Dr. Bolton mentioned, we did come up with a timeline. It's a little bit, it's kind of small up there, but you do have a copy in front of you. We really felt that it was important and a commitment that we made to this task force that this work was really following a timeline, and we were able to set benchmarks for the work that we were doing. So you'll notice that November through December really was focusing on that standard response protocol training, our comprehensive school safety plan updates, threat assessment training, physical site assessments, and then working through the winter and the spring, really looking at some of those physical recommendations or physical site recommendations that we'll get through OKAC, as well as some additional training, focusing our summer on physical security projects, and then really launching into the beginning of the school year with our standard response training, refreshers and trainings, as well as our lockdown trainings. So the first part that we want to review is our I Love You Guys standard response protocol training. So this was something that was a commitment of our task force to make sure that we have a common language, and it was adopted through the I Love You Guys Foundation. So the standard response protocol training, as you'll see, there's five actions that all staff have been or will be trained on. At this point, we've trained over 2,000 of our certificated and classified staff members. This was the focus of our November 1st professional development time. There will be posters and signage that will be delivered to the schools soon, and everyone will be trained in this, and then we'll start training students, as well as getting the information out to parents. We felt that this was really important to make sure that we have common language, so that everybody knows the actions that need to be taken in different situations, and every person who's on our school sites is trained in these actions. For Synthegix, so this is something I'll invite Kristi to come up and talk about.
I want to echo Sean's comments at the beginning, of course, with Karen and Shar. So grateful for both of you and your support over the years. But we are also very grateful for the quick action led by our superintendent, Executive Cabinet, and of course, from the board. When you really look at the timeline and how quickly the forums were put together, the Safety Task Force, there has been a lot of action that has been taken within a short period of time, and that was a high priority from the Safety Task Force. So I'm really proud of the work that the Safety Task Force recommended and supported within that period of time. So thank you for the opportunity. As Sarah mentioned and began to speak about with the SRP, or I Love You Guys standard response protocol, communication is critical in any type of emergency, and that is something that we recognized as the Safety Task Force. So she had shared 2,000 staff members, certificated and classified, were trained on November 1st with additional follow-up that will be provided. It was really important to provide consistent communication, thinking of our students as young as preschool all the way through our seniors in high school. Something to keep in mind is not only will that consistent communication be provided for our students, our staff, parents, but also thinking of anybody coming and going, for example, substitute teachers. It's just really important to think of those visuals, so to provide as much support in case of an emergency. Another component, when we're looking at the communication, is Synthegix Crisis Alert. And this is a program or a system that Newport Harbor and Davis Elementary are going to pilot, and really, it's looking at two different types of communication. One, staff alert and thinking of different types of medical situations. Here at Davis, a coyote walking on the field, something like that. A quick three push of the button on the staff member's badge could quickly alert the front office and staff members. Additionally, a part of the Synthegix plan, there comes a system where you hold on to the button, and it sends an alert with lights and sounds across the school campuses. So we're going to be participating in that pilot. We will be providing feedback to the Superintendent School Board and Executive Board, but that installation is scheduled to take place December or January of 2023. Okay? Now I'm going to turn it back over to Sarah.
Wait, do you mean December 20? Go ahead, ask a question. Press the button. One quick question.
Yeah.
Principal Flores, you said December 2023, January 2020, 2022? Like, next month?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So we're looking at over winter break. Hopefully, it's a quick installation, and it is something that we're looking at. We've not made any big commitments at this point. We're really looking to see, will this fill a need, and is it something that we feel is absolutely necessary to the work that we're doing through safety? So we're grateful for both Sean and Kristi for being willing to pilot this at their schools to see if it's something that really fits the Newport Mesa standard of where we want to go with our safety work. So the next part of this, too, and something that we've been talking about for a while, is a standardized tip line. And so we spent a lot of time looking into the different types of tip lines that are out there. We worked with about 10 different districts across the county to see what tip lines and systems they were using, as well as a few districts outside of the county, just to see, you know, what is out there and what are people looking at. And what really rose to the top was WeTip 2.0, as well as See Something, Say Something through Sandy Hook Promise. And through the task force, it was decided to go with the WeTip 2.0 to try that out for this school year. The reason for that is because they offer 24/7 monitoring of the tips, which is something that we really heard loud and clear from our principals would be an added value to them, because this program or this company will be looking at all of our tips, so on the weekends, in the middle of the night, and they'll be helping to filter through the tips to see, is this an urgent tip? And if that is the case, they'll be notifying those of us at the district office that needs to be notified, as well as local PD and site leaders, and taking care of that so that our response time is as quick as it can be. There's also the option for people to text in tips. There's also QR codes, a telephone hotline, as well as web forums that are available for this tip line, which we felt was important to be able to offer a variety of different ways for people to submit their tips. We're going to be starting with the implementation at all of our secondary schools. Again, based off of principal feedback, we heard loud and clear that we felt like this is the highest area of need and where we felt like really implementing the tip lines would be the most important at this point. And we'll be working closely with our public information office to make sure that we're promoting it and getting that information out there. The tip line, we will be bringing forward for board approval in December, and so with that anticipated approval, we'll be looking at implementation in early 2023. So we're really looking forward to this. I also do want to mention that they do endorse the standard response protocols through I Love You Guys. They're also supported by our insurance, and so we felt like that was really also just an added benefit, because it works nicely with the other work that we're already doing.
We've got two questions. Trustee Crane, and Trustee Matoye, and then Trustee Wigan.
Sure.
Okay. Question is, Synthegix is a adult user program. What about the WeTip 2.0? Is that a student-based, or is that also, is it an adult one?
It's student, it could be student, parent, or community member. So there'll be a variety of different types of tips that could be submitted, and through that 24/7 monitoring, they'll be able to help us filter through those tips. So we're receiving a report of, you know, if somebody says we saw someone trespassing in the middle of the night, or the sprinklers were left on all night, and maybe it's not an emergency type of tip, but we'll receive those. But then also working with our students to say, this would be something that we would like you to use to help inform us. It is confidential in the fact that, you know, you can submit it without the name, and there is a way for the person who's receiving the tip to have two-way communication back and forth with that person to get more information. But we really, you know, we'll be focusing on students and getting it out there, but it can really be for anyone.
Yeah, that was my next question, was confidentiality, because then that could affect the reporting part, so.
Sure. There's an option for people to put their name in there if they wanted to be a part of that follow-up, but we also know, especially with students, that the confidentiality piece is important, you know, so we wanted to make sure that was an option as well.
I would love to hear some student input from our student board members, maybe during this presentation, how you feel about it and everything.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to have that confidentiality. I think that students really value that, you know. Sometimes, I guess fear can get to them, saying like, oh, should I even say anything? But for us students, knowing that that's there, that's a great option.
Great. Thank you.
I just know that we've referenced a few times the I Love You Guys format, and most, when I first heard it, I went, huh? I did, and then we went through the training, and now it's, it became very clear and pointed. So I thought if you could just give like a thumbnail, I realize it's a few slides back, which is fine, but I thought that was a really important message.
As far as how it was started? So it was started by a parent who lost their daughter in an act of school violence, so they were held hostage, and in that situation, their daughter was able to text back and forth with a parent, and the last message that she sent to her parent was, I love you guys. And so that was something that really, you know, fueled the mission for these parents to establish this foundation, and they felt that this was an area of need and something, you know, we really needed to be able to provide these standard response protocols and get them out to schools. It is also something, I think, important to mention, it's free of cost, so all of the materials, they do this really because they feel so passionately about this work. All of the materials are free to us, so we're able to use them at, you know, however we feel is necessary.
And it was exciting to me to understand that the parents and the kids and the staff, we will have a similar, a same language. Everyone will know. At that time, I didn't know the difference between a lockdown and a shelter-in-place in my mind, back in those days when I was a principal, they were the same thing to me, and they're not. So that's a good thing to find out, because as a parent, if I got a little notice that said, your children are sheltering in place, I could relax, but if your children are in lockdown, then my anxiety would go up, but.
Sure. And I want to emphasize, too, that our SROs, as well as our local police department, went through the training with us as well, and so we felt that was really important because they're working alongside us, and so they'll be speaking the same language that we are.
Exactly. Thank you.
Trustee Wigan.
So on the WeTip 2.0, which is great, do they also do like social media monitoring? So say that, you know, it's not maybe a kid doesn't, or a parent or someone doesn't, you know, tip them, but they're monitoring social media accounts that maybe that no one else is seeing?
So WeTip won't monitor social media accounts for us, but I will say that we work closely with the local police department, as well as OKAC, who does monitor social media, and they are able to help us if there's things that are starting to come through that we need to be aware of. But we don't, at this point, have anything that we can be monitoring any sort of social media. All right, Teddy?
Yep.
All right. All right, so the next part that we really wanted to share with you is an integrated electronic security system and the standards that'll come along with that. So something that we heard a lot in our community forums was that we want cameras, and everybody would really like cameras, and we're really interested in cameras, and so are we. But we wanted to take a few steps back to make sure that we're approaching this in the right way. So under the guidance and the leadership of Lance Bitnick, we are starting with our integrated electronic security system standards, and this really is to make sure that any hardware that we're purchasing can integrate in with the other systems that we have in place. So our electronic access control, as well as any sort of intrusion detection, that all of these systems work in together and can kind of talk to each other, and that we're not competing with each other, and that we're not purchasing things that, you know, aren't going to work for us in the future. So this will go out to bid in the winter, so this winter, and then a district standard will be determined in winter of 2023. We will also be utilizing the physical site assessments that we received from OKAC before we make any big decisions about where placement will be, or what equipment we're, or not the equipment, but what we're going to be moving forward with, because they really are going to be the experts who are able to come in and say, you know, site by site, this is what we recommend that you do. So we'll be working in partnership with them on this piece as well. And then lobby security, which we know has been a hot topic, and so being able to provide a secure entry to school lobbies during school hours, having active monitoring and access permitted before people come onto campus. So there's a Contract for Design went out in October. Scope of work development has been established, it's gone out to bid this winter, and then the bid will be awarded in late winter, and we'll be coordinating installation of this in spring of 2023 for all of our school sites.
Trustee Matoye.
What will that look like?
So that's a great.
What are you thinking? It doesn't have to be the name of the company or whatever, but what do you think that will be like?
So I want to defer to Lance on that, who wasn't able to be here this evening, and so I know, so I will make sure that we pass that along to Jeff, and so we can get you more information about that.
Yeah. Would you have him answer me before I leave?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll take an email. I'll make sure to tell him.
Okay, thank you. Before December 8th.
Before December, yeah.
Trustee Wigan.
I guess going a little bit off of Matoye's question, I wanted to see, was there a lot of discussion on keeping the front doors locked from the task force? Because I know that in various schools, sometimes they do different things, but having those front doors locked.
Right, and they do, and that's something that came out, too, in the standard response protocol training, is making sure that we have doors locked, and so we're looking through the process and procedures on that and coming up with really clear guidelines to the schools. So part of that lobby security would include that.
It's a fine line between, especially at an elementary school, of being a warm and welcoming place and someplace where you have to be buzzed in to come in, and it's tough. So I hope that you keep that warm, welcoming place in your head while we're buzzing people in.
Right, and to that point, it is a very, it's a delicate balance between making sure that people feel welcome to come into our schools and be a part of the community, but then also making sure that we're keeping students and staff safe. So we're really, we're working together, and we'll be working with the experts in that as well, so working with OKAC to determine what is the best practice and what do we need to be putting forward with all of our schools. So our Threat Assessment Protocol, so we've had a Threat Assessment Protocol for a number of years. We always evaluate the threats that we have coming through our schools. But working through this task force, both Jonathan and I attended a school safety summit that was hosted through the county, and again, had experts in the field, and something that came out of that was the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, or C-SAG, which is actually the only evidence-based threat assessment protocol that exists for schools. It was born out of Virginia Tech, and a lot of work has been done to establish these protocols. So we're working closely with the OC SMART team, or the Orange County School Mobile Assessment and Resource Team, that is facilitated through the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Their team will be coming out to train our staff. Everyone will receive a copy of the handbook, so it has all of the protocols in place. And something that's really important to note here, too, is that it's not just about evaluating the threat, but also evaluating the intent, evaluating the reason why, you know, the mental health of the student, and making sure that we're not just putting kids on a fast track to the juvenile justice system, but really providing them with supports and resources when these types of threats come through. Obviously, evaluating the threat and making sure that we're acting accordingly, but I think that this will be a really, it'll be a great benefit to our school sites, and we've listed everyone that'll be trained in these protocols. So it's everyone from our principals and our assistant principals, admin interns, to our mental health staff. So it's everyone from our principals and our assistant principals, admin interns, to our mental health staff, to our campus safety, our school resource officers will be trained in this, as well as a variety of district staff. Best practice is that you have at least five people on a school site who are trained in these protocols. We're going to have more, because we really feel like this is important, and we want to make sure that we're covered no matter what the situation is. So we'll be hosting these trainings in January and February here at the district office, and we're really looking forward to going through this with our staff.
Okay. What is our plan for ongoing training? It's great that our entire, all the people that are on this list are going to get trained, and that's fabulous. And maybe 10 of them may retire between, at the end of this year, or be moved out and moved up to better things. Or maybe one of them will be the lucky lottery winner.
Yeah.
And we're really good at training, and then we get new people and we forget. And so it's really important for ongoing training. So is there, please make sure that there's a plan.
Yes, so we are working closely with our human resources department to make sure that we're tracking all employees who are being trained through these various protocols and various models that we have, so that we know everybody who's trained. And then as we do onboarding, and as we're looking at new employees, making sure that the critical people who are part of this work are getting trained as well. Yes, so the Orange County Smart team has offered, they'll come out and do as many trainings as we want them to have. So if we wanted to do a once-a-year training to include new staff or people who wanted a refresher, then they're more than happy to do that with us.
Thank you, that's comforting.
Trustee Crane, and then Trustee. Okay, Trustee Anderson, Trustee Crane, Trustee Wigan, and then Trustee Bartel.
Thank you. Thank you for this. I was wondering, I love that we are training extensively. I was thinking it could be also great to include some of the staff who really know their school community well, and/or a parent may go to them first. And so two groups would be the school community facilitators and the front office staff on our campuses, because I feel like, A, if I was a front office staff person, I would want to know in detail what I'm supposed to do or who I should be looking for. And our facilitators are often the very first person that a parent will go to.
Yes.
So I would, I would like to request that we add them to the list. And then also too, I believe that Newport Beach is starting to do more work with BeWell and the mobile response units. And so just to add them as well with SRO, so that everyone's on the same page and knows, okay, in Newport Mesa, if it's a student, if they come to a school, what that looks like.
Yeah, so BeWell is part of our risk screening process. And so when we have a student who's, you know, suicidal ideation, self-harm, we are working with BeWell and have a partnership with them for them to come out to our school sites. So they're absolutely a part of that. They haven't done a lot of work with the threat assessment piece. It's mostly been the risk screening side of things. But I think it's something to keep in mind, that we always want to look, whatever community partners are working closely with us, make sure that they know the protocols that we use.
Thank you. Okay, Trustee Wigan.
So one thing, it's great to train all of these, but what about training our teachers to look for something? Because they're the ones that see the kids day-to-day, and if they can understand a little bit about what that student's going through, or just, you know, be the first one to say, ah, this kid is, I'm suspicious.
It's a great point. So actually, through the OC Smart team, they've developed, it's about a one-hour staff PD. And so our priority right now is to go through the threat assessment the full, it's an eight-hour full-day training. But then the next step is that they've developed this training that we can work closely with our site leaders. So you go through at their staff meetings to do just that, to be able to identify, here's some of the things, and if you notice this, then you need to make sure that they're being referred for an actual threat assessment.
I'm going to pop in with a question, and then Trustee Yelsey. You didn't even push your button.
Yes.
So, quick question, is, we have our city liaison meeting. I know Newport Beach is doing some things, I know Coast Maysa is doing some things. I think a lot of times in those meetings, staff maybe is on the same page, but there have been times when school board members and council members are sharing new information, even though we take for granted that the other group already knows. So I'd love to somehow include that as part of our city liaison meetings, this plan is shared. I think the most powerful thing I've seen when these things work is just communication, which you guys are already really doing a great job on, especially with the sheriff's department and the police force. So that's great. But I think just from everyone being on the same page, if we could bring this into our city liaison meetings. Additionally, we have a lot of really smart and articulate students, as we've heard lately, and empowering them to understand how the tip process works. There'll always be some of the silly tips that come in, you know, as we've seen. But I think kind of doing some education as to what to look for, you know, just like the airport, if you see an abandoned piece of luggage, what does that look like at a school site?
Yeah.
And what should students kind of, you know, be wary of or be unconcerned about as we go forward, what that looks like?
No, I think that's great. We'll definitely note that.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes, thank you, thank you for the entire report. I know you're not quite finished, but I think it's, no, I think it's fabulous what you have done so far, and as far back to the community meetings that I think started over the summer, that were really well-attended, so that's great. My comment though is along the lines of Trustee Metoye, where she said it's important that we continuously do get new people, and things change, and then people say, oh, well, let's go look for something new, because we don't have anything that fits that. And I mention that because about eight years ago, we allowed a company called Titan to beta-test a program at Cronodomar High School, because the person who founded this company was a Cronodomar school graduate. And it successfully was tested there. And in fact, it was used a great deal. Sometimes when other forms of communication, because we had power outages, weren't happening, that they could use the Titan system. We used it as a board, and then expanded it to some of the schools. Not everybody used it. But it was used very successfully. And additionally, not that this is the criteria, we didn't pay for it because we allowed them to beta-test it. They were giving it to us free. This company has gone on to be very successful. They've secured SoFi Stadium, everything that happens up there, they do most of the hotels in Las Vegas. So I know it's a legitimate company now, they do a lot of things. So I would not, it's kind of been left by the wayside, because we've had a change, not only at the school sites, like Kathy Scott was a principal back then, but even within the district level, that different people were in charge of it. So I just would hope, whether we're not going to use that at all, or look at that again, or also just with these new programs, make sure that we don't continuously do that, where we bring in a program, and then we just get new people and want to bring in another new program, because we do that sometimes too often.
Right, and it's like you can see into the future, because we are going to talk about Titan when we get to communication, because it is something that's important, and as we've done in evaluation of our safety work, just that, we want to make sure that what we're bringing in is sustainable, and it's something that becomes part of our district culture. And really, making sure, that's why we had all of these people involved, was to make sure that this is going to live beyond us. And so this becomes part of the Newport Mesa standard. And really, the commitments that we've made, that have been endorsed by the task force, that have been in partnership with our community members, and so making sure that this is a sustainable model. And it's just not because I liked it, or because somebody else felt good about it. And we definitely are looking at how Titan, for example, will be integrated into some of the updates that we've made, because we do feel like they're a valuable partner and something that we want to see how this could work with the things that we're going to be doing.
And not just the next best, latest, greatest thing.
Right, right. For the next one, yes? Okay, so the Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center, or Okayak. So all schools, as well as our other district facilities, will be going through a physical site assessment. So this will be starting in December, so over the winter break as well, with us at this point, anticipated conclusion in March of 2023. And so as, you know, assuming that we stay on schedule, we'll be able to go through all of our sites and be able to do those site assessments. There's a pre-assessment site questionnaire that we're working with our principals to complete. And then the Critical Infrastructure Protection Unit will be coming out to each of the sites to do individualized assessments. And then they'll be providing us with a consolidated report, that as I mentioned, will be integrating into the other work that we're doing, whether it be the camera piece and the integrated system there, the lobby security, and so on.
Trustee Metoye.
Who does Okayak answer to, or what are they a part of? I mean, it's like, is it the Department of the Defense? Is it the National Security Agency?
It's Homeland Security.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it Homeland Security?
It is.
Okay then.
And they work in partnership with the FBI, as well as the local law enforcement agencies. Yeah, good, all right. And then finally, you know, we really want to make sure to, to your point, that the communication is ongoing. And so we'll be working to push out information through email, as well as through Blackboard. So that would be through email, as well as text messages and phone calls out to parents. We are again looking at Titan and how that integrate into the work that we've been doing, and using that as a, as a part of our emergency communication. We will be working together to do our email and social media campaigns, again, to really get this information out in a variety of ways, collaborating closely with Harvard Council PTA, as well as our student leaders and our site leaders, and then continuing to update our safety webpage. And so if you've been on there recently, you'll notice under Quick Links that school safety has a standing spot under Quick Links. And so we wanted to make sure that it was easy for people to locate. And again, in a promise of full transparency, we've been posting all of the different slide decks from the task force. This slide deck will be posted on there as well, so that the community is able to see all of the information and the updates regarding school safety. And I know we've talked a lot already, but if there's any additional question or discussion regarding this, again, we've really appreciated all of your support, all of the questions and the guidance that you've provided to us, the information that you've brought to us from the community. We couldn't do this work without your support, as well as our executive cabinet, Dr. Smith. And so we've been really grateful for this opportunity to really dive in deep into this work. And as we know, safety work never ends. And so we look forward to continuing to work with you on this, and to continue to keep our students and staff safe. Great. All right.
Trustee Metoye.
Thank you so much for the, for the presentation. We've had, we've had several safety presentations, but, and I've heard them for the whole 24 years that I was before I came on the board too. This one by far seems to be the most insightful of recognizing what's been done in the past, where we, what, where it's brought us to now, hopefully make taking action for the future. And it's sort of like educating our kids. We're educating them for jobs that we don't know exist by the time they graduate from high school. Your, this plan seems flexible enough, but safe enough to keep our kids safe, regardless of the, of the challenges that they may meet, may they never ever meet, but in the future. So thank you very much for all the hard work you guys have done in such a short time.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, I truly appreciate the collaborative effort across the community and all the partnerships. We've, we've done these presentations before, and I've never seen it so well-communicated between all the groups that could really assist us in both longevity, but just generally in safety, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you all, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we go to 19A. Discussion concerning textbook curriculum review process. So this was brought to us by a member of the community. And what we liked about the idea was that many times in between curriculum adoptions, there are, you know, items that come up that are new for our textbooks. So we wanted to speak about how we could best understand changes that were made in curriculum and textbooks in between, and have a good understanding of what that additional review would look like. I think many of us are, you know, have seen things that we had not expected in new editions, and wanting to be well-informed and make sure that that fits the board's vision and spirit of where we're leading with curriculum. Did anyone have any discussion to add to that? Go ahead.
Well, I just, I've been on a review panel for many of our textbooks, a lot of them. And there hasn't been the controversy that there is now when changes are made. And the challenge for us is to make sure that whilst there may be some things in society that make us individually uncomfortable, that doesn't mean that they don't exist, and that we would be remiss in not making sure our children, our students and our children understand them. We definitely have to make sure that we're not promoting something, or taking a stand on an issue, but our kids need to know what's out there, because they can't be informed adults if they're, they're kept in a shelter in their entire childhood. But that being said, when a new edition comes out, we should review it to make sure how, what's different, what's not different. So, thank you.
Trustee Yelsey, and then Trustee Crane.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I, in all the years, I know we have the adoption process, and we have the books on review for 30 days, and everybody can come in and read them. I wasn't aware that when new, then when we ordered new books within that same adoption, but they had changed, that we don't see those changes. And so that's something that I think we should be made aware of. So we, as Trustee Metoye said, just be able to review what the changes are moving forward, because I think, especially in today's world, things do change rapidly. So we could have the same book, and we think we're getting it a year later, ordering new books, because they've been damaged, lost, we need more, whatever. And then we get books that have a totally new slant to them. And we should be made aware of that, so we can bring it up, bring it into discussion. That's what I feel.
Trustee Crane.
Yeah, I think just another factor is the fact that we live in a digital age, where a textbook becomes obsolete once it's hot off the press, really, because our students are accessing information real, in live, I mean, real time. So I think that's part of the adjustment, you know? We just have to, as a society, figure out how we can find the balance. And I think that's when the teacher in the classroom comes into play, where they can update information, or whatever, or, you know, we use, use, I guess, the existing updated information that is in real time to the advantage of advancement.
Student board member, Isabella, I'm sorry, Marcellina Sanchez.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Metoye. Although the things in society can be a little bit uncomfortable, there are things that we learn from, and they do exist. So I feel like sometimes there can be like a fine line on like, you know, where to go. But at the end of the day, there are things that us students need to learn about, because when we go out into the real world, and it's seen as like, oh, it didn't exist, well, it did. So I guess it's, it just kind of depends as well.
One thing too that we found going through this process is there's not an existing policy really to model. And kind of the, what I think would be a great, what I would like to see, I guess, is when new editions come out, that we're, you know, informed as board members, so that we can have an opportunity to review them, and whether or not we take that opportunity or not, but at least we've, you know, been informed. And then if board members feel that there's a need for further discussion, that can come up.
I think it would also be.
Sorry, there was someone before you.
Oh, there was?
Yep.
No, is that you're looking?
Trustee Wigan.
I guess I have a question on, when a publisher does publish a new edition, do they inform us that what has changed in that textbook at all? Or is it a, hey, we have a new edition, and we're going to purchase them now, that's a thing? But how are we aware of new editions, and how are we aware of changes that might have occurred in the textbook?
So publishers approach that a little bit differently, but typically, they do let us know when we go to place and order if the current version is no longer available. So that's the first thing they'll let us know. At times, some publishers provide a summary of changes, or they'll tell us the reordering of chapters or content in a book. And sometimes that comes as a document, I've seen it that way. There's also been times where our vendor or representative from the company will be able to share that with us. Most textbook companies at this point in time are going digital. So typically, they have a level of information that's provided to us digitally. So it looks different depending on how large the publishing house is.
And since things are digitally, I would imagine that they have supplemental materials that has links to different websites and all that kind of stuff. So it gets very long, right? They're an online textbook.
Well, the full version of our online textbooks are very in-depth. And one of the things that publishers, we have challenges with at times, is they do not give the entire content online for free to people, because it's a protected copyrighted material. So that's, most of your large clearinghouses will not do that. What they do is they give you just a sampling, like for, for someone in the public, just to Google Princess Hall and go on there, you'll get a sample of something, but you won't get the in-depth review. Once you go into a purchasing contract as a school district, they'll provide a limited-term access for people to look at it. But it wouldn't live in perpetuity out there, if that makes sense. Trustee Anderson, and then Trustee Ursula.
Thank you. As part of that review process, I think it would be great, I mean, I was somebody who would read my history books for front, like front, cover to cover, starting in like fourth grade. So I think it would be great to include students in that process. So I think it would be great to include students in that process and make them aware that it's available. I know sometimes, you know, we have our current books available for 30 days, you know, but I think there's an accessibility issue for some, for parents and community members and also some students. And so I just think it would be great to include students in that process as well. Thank you.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Thank you. Would you be able to tell us why, why does the average textbook get updated? So for instance, the health sciences book that we've heard so much about, what prompts a publisher to make a new edition of a book?
Couple of different things. Longevity, so how long has a book been out? And typically, in California, adoptions are about seven years. So when you purchase a book, it's typically good for about seven years. And that's usually based on the shifts in the California state standards. So once a, the California Department of Ed says, we are going to write new English Language Arts standards, they start to go into that process. And then typically textbooks need to match that. And so a district has a timeframe that's typically appropriate, that you'd start looking at materials so that you are teaching something that's aligned to the California state standards at that time. In most recent history, in the last two years, the health frameworks were rewritten in California that prompted publishers to come back out and to rewrite content in books. And then, of course, we had the passage of AB 260, excuse me, AB 329 in 2016, which also prompted publishers to redo their textbooks to ensure that they were aligned to the new legislative changes in the health frameworks. So that's an example of how they'd be changed. If we, I think the practical question is, so CSB doesn't have a policy for new edition review, but they do have for adoption. What would that look like practically if, say, board members or if, when a new edition came out, that, there was some kind of way that that could be notified? A, from a burden on staff perspective, or B, you know, how feasible is that actually? We have been brainstorming that. So since the last discussion we've had with Dr. Smith, John Drake and I have been just kind of brainstorming what some of those options could be. I think we could be prepared to come back at another time to be able to share a plan with you that would be thoughtful, but we could, you know, we have similar processes right now in place for literature books and other things that we bring forward that don't follow under the required education code requirements for textbook adoptions because that is why CSBA does not have a policy for new additions because they have the ed code governs only the original adoption. So typically, that's where the policy lies. But we could create an internal process that lives in elementary and secondary education that would mirror each other, that would be able to provide a process that we could bring forward to the public and to our board, the new adoptions that have these new additions to provide information forward. We could work through what that could look like.
And I think just one of the other things to consider is, and maybe more so in elementary where there aren't first editions, second editions, third editions, fourth editions, like there may be more often in secondary. But if we're looking at a new edition, we may be considering a whole new adoption process. You know, if we're looking at something that we're not satisfied with, that we currently have adopted and a new edition has come out, we may take that as an opportunity to just go with a full, full-fledged adoption process to make sure that we're, we're getting the materials that our teachers are wanting and needing in their hands.
Thank you. Yeah, because I think this, the whole conversation is really just about communication ultimately. Dr. Smith.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that point there is really important to make. The reason CSB doesn't have a policy about recent additions is because their policy on adoption still stands. So it's, it's in the, the board's interest to adopt different curriculum, then we go through that process that, that you've done time and time again with all of those required reviews, et cetera. So that is the policy that, that would be applied to this scenario. And what, what Carrie's talking about is the review process, the adoption process sits as it has in that policy.
Trustee Matoye. So therefore, if, if we wanted to refine it to include the revisions, then that would be something that could be in the AR, which for those of you that don't know, that's administrative regulations, which is pretty much how do we implement the policy that the board just decided on? Or would we, or would the new board address the policy and include it into the policy? It, I, I think we need, as a, as a district, I think we need to have a system in place because the changes have been more drastic. Not that, I think it's bad, because like I said, I think we should have those things included, but I do think the board should be made aware when there are changes that much, so that, that we know what's going on. That's all. So, and there was no action required, it's just discussion, so.
All right.
That's.
Right. So I think that's, does any, any further comments? And I just think that it's important that a lot of times people think that these conversations happen behind closed doors, but we are doing our business in public and that, you know, because of the Brown Act, we get to have these discussions all together, all seven of us in public. And I think that it's great when we do so.
And I really appreciate our student input. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. With that, I'm going to move to 20 consent calendar minus 20D2. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus 20D2?
So moved. Second.
Let him go for it. Yes. It's been moved by Trustee Yelsey and seconded by Trustee Matoye. Roll call vote. Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee. Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Okay. Move to discussion action calendar, 21A, approved DLR Group Baker New Wiki for Facilities Master Plan District-wide. May I have a motion?
Oh, so moved.
Second. It doesn't say that Ara is on here, but it looks like she's prepared to speak, so thank you.
Is there any questions?
Would you just explain it for the public so they know what we're voting on?
Yeah. So, good evening, President Bartow, trustees, Dr. Superintendent Wes Smith, executive cabinet and guests. I'm Adha Zaresny, I'm the Director of Facilities, and I've been here for 18 years, so I want to kind of take you back a little bit. First of all, congratulations to you, Shar and Karen. We've worked on a lot of projects together and I've always enjoyed working with you, so I'll miss you. So that being said, just as a reminder of where we are with facilities and the maintenance plan as well, when I started working here, we were going through Measure A, which was our modernization program, our bond program that we had implemented, which modernized all of the permanent facilities in the district. So there's a variety of different projects that occurred with Measure A. Once we had completed those modernization projects, we went through another phase, which was called Increment Two, where we looked at all of our relocatable buildings and we made sure that they were all DSA compliant and they met the standards of the district at the time. Since then, we have had Measure F, which has done some of our more fun projects, right? Challenging fun, we'll call it whatever. And so we're kind of at the tail end of those projects. And being in the Facilities Department and in the Maintenance Department, we get a variety of requests for projects. This site wants a shade structure, this site wants artificial turf or a field. And so really, we need to establish a facilities master plan and fold into the maintenance plan into that effort. And so just a, a real quick brief background on how we got to where we are today. In September of 21, we went out and we issued a request for proposal for architects for master services agreement, not necessarily the master plan itself. We received 22 different proposals for architects. Since that time, we've gone through and we've issued three master agreements for architectural services as a result of that process. But we're not just going to hand a project over to an architect, so we had them proposed yet again specifically on the facilities master plan effort. We had two firms who had submitted on those and we conducted interviews. Those interviews, we had principals in there, we had principal from Newport Harbor High School, we had principal from Back Bay, we had our Executive Director of Secondary Education in those meetings to really get a feel for how this team would interact with the sites, not just facilities, people who do this stuff all the time, but with sites. And so today, we're here to bring forth an agreement with DLR Group Baker New Wiki to start going through the process of establishing a facilities master plan. And our intent is to bring the team back to you in January with a laid-out plan so that you know how the process is going to work, which will be comprised of an executive management team, site management teams, and then our community outreach. And so we're going to prepare a plan to present to you so you know what it looks like, what a proposed timeframe can look like, and then we'll adjust as we have that dialogue with you and that discussion with you. So I'm excited to work with this firm. It's not a firm that we've worked with before, but in the, in CASH, one of the organizations, advocacy organizations that I attend, there are conferences all the time, this company had stellar awards for UTK planning, for theater planning, for traditional gymnasiums, middle schools, high schools. So they're, they're a great company to work with and we're looking forward to that.
So we have superintendent and then Trustee Crane.
I just wanted to say that on behalf of staff, we're excited. A, a year ago next month, this group right here sat in this room and talked about district priorities related to our LCAP and other goals. And one of the explicit priorities was the facilities master plan. So here we are with that opportunity to really be intentional about the work that we do and how we do it. And I just want to, as I, as I do whenever I can, brag about this governance team, this board. You, you set a goal, Ara and the team have worked hard to realize that goal on your behalf, so it's, it's exciting.
Trustee Crane.
Intentional is one of my favorite words. So, all right, is the group here tonight?
No, they're not.
Okay. All right. I thought that maybe, I see some-
I have some other friends from other projects.
All right. Okay, because I, because I, because I, I saw you, you came in, you came in with a group and I was curious to see who-
It's my bodyguards entering with me.
Would you like to take the time to introduce your entourage?
So, so we have actually the general contractor for the leased leaseback contract for Estancia Theater. He's here tonight. Would you like them to come up and introduce themselves?
Yes, absolutely. We're spending a lot of money. Like to meet the people.
We can't, this isn't an agenda, so you can't do that.
Oh, we can't do that.
Not an agenda, sorry.
Not an agenda.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Apologies.
I was trying to reflect.
I'd love to meet you, sorry.
They're here, you'll, you'll see them around, so we're excited about that, too. Sorry about that.
So we can't.
Sorry.
It's just facilities.
Got it. I'll figure it out by the time I'm gone.
Any other questions?
No, but just thank you very much. I know this is one of our board priorities, so it's nice to see the rubber hit the road. I'm getting tired, it's a bad pun, but that's what I'm trying to say. But it's nice to get there.
Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it.
So now we go to roll call vote. Student Board Member.
Yes.
Student Board Member Marcellina Sanchez.
Yes, we did. I moved it. Ashley seconded it.
I seconded.
Oh, Trustee Orsoilu. Thank you.
Student Board Member Marcellina Sanchez.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Thank you. And now we move to informal reports.
So we've got amazing students. You've heard me say it before, I'll say it again, every board meeting. I had a chance this weekend to go watch our Newport Harbor water polo team beat a private school. That's right. As the kids in the stands said, our education is free. And it was awesome. In, in the last period, one of, two of our, our athletes had to leave the water because they had fouled out. And we were up, but the substitute players came in, the other teamers came in and held on and, and won the game. It was, it was awesome. I know some of you went, so I'll let you talk about it. I was at a town that day, but Cal State Fullerton recognized some of our staff and some of you were there, so I'll, I'll defer to you. Really, really excited that, you know, we've got these plans that are on the agenda today, plans, items to move forward, the Estancia Theater project, that's part of this board, get it done, get it done on budget. And Amber Morrow Keen, who's new to the school, not to the community, is starting a drama club at T-Winkle to encourage participation at the feeder school level, then eventually down to the elementary level. So we have this program, so we fill that theater when it's built, and that's exciting. Had a chance, or a couple of invites, want to make you aware of. Been asked to serve on a statewide California staffing collaborative to bring together a think tank of folks to say, how do we address staffing shortages statewide endorsed by State Board of Education, other agencies? So we'll be having that conversation. And then on the board for a CTE coalition recently, they know, they, well, they, they said, hey, Newport Mesa really values CTE, the work that you do is exemplary, will you come and share why this is important to your students and your communities? So I'll be serving on those. And then finally, and just briefly, because I've said in other places, but Julie always says, when you can't think of something to say, just say thank you. So I'll thank Karen and Shar for their service, for trusting me and giving me this job, for teaching me, I've learned a lot, for teaching me how even when you disagree, you do the work. Both of you have been a little angry with me over the last year, over a couple of items, and have said you disagreed. Karen even said, Wes, we're not going to agree on this. And you know, that's okay, right? That's the way it's supposed to work in this country. We might disagree, but we have the same focus, right? The rights and needs of our kids and putting that first and foremost. So just thank you both for everything you've done for this district, what you've done for my wife and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to go first, and then I'm going to go a little bit out of order so that Charlene and Karen get the last words.
I know who gets the last word.
I was actually going to have you go last, last, but, but I just want to say, I attended on November 3rd, whatever that Friday was, the OC Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Don Barnes sponsored a fighting fentanyl together. It was really well presented. You can tell it's a big, big passion of Sheriff Barnes and he put together a really wonderful group of people, Be Well OC, people from UCI, just talking about the different ways that it's affected other communities and the country and our, our county and the concern that he has seen himself as a sheriff dealing with these things and the uptick that he's seen over the past few years. I think that it's something that over Halloween, we all got a little maybe confused by the media. And I, I was on the OCSBA presentation yesterday and the doctor on the presentation, her name is CK, I don't, she just goes by Dr. CK, she has a long name, but she was saying just the frustration that she has because she speaks with the media on a regular basis and she spends two hours with them a week and what she gets are soundbites in the news that are, your kids are going to get fentanyl with their Halloween candy. So that was a really big contrast to the way the Sheriff's Department presentation gave their information. It was a very, actually interactive presentation, which was a great way to kind of drive home the points that this is a real issue in our communities and what people can do and how to empower community leaders. And, you know, we had school board members, all kinds of things there. Harvard Council PTA was there as well. But just how we can inform our students, inform our community and adults and practical actions that we can bring back to our school district. So I'm excited to hopefully move forward with some of those and was just thankful for the Sheriff's Department for putting together such a, it was a three-hour presentation and I wasn't poured for a minute, they did a really good job. We'll go to trustee, we'll just go down the line and then we'll go back to Shar.
Skip this one.
We'll skip Charlie.
Which is good, because then I can cross stuff off.
Well, I, I wanted to congratulate the newly-elected board trustees.
Oh. See, I can cross something off already.
And I also wanted to thank HR Department for their wonderful retirement party. And I know Kathleen Hedges did a lot of work and thank you- And I know Kathleen Hedges did a lot of work, and thank you, Leona, for your department's involvement and all that. Then, I wanted to also thank Rosie for the work for tonight, that was a big job. You basically threw a party and then got, you know, from the invite list to everything, ordering the food, and also courting all that it takes to make the night happen, so thank you, Rosie, and whoever else helped you. I was impressed by our Moody's ratings when I was reading our attachments, wow, our district is in good shape. And I would like to, just went to a lot of events. This is the season from Zone Pack, CDM Zone Pack meetings, to Battle of the Bell, Battle of the Bay, CDM Play, this all rhymes. And that's it, thank you, just gratitude for Shar and Karen's years of service. Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Thank you. First, I was very excited to go to our Battle of the Bell and have Estancia win, it was very, very exciting.
Well, sort of.
Well, it was, it was for me.
Yes, it was.
And I got to attend the Whittier Fall Festival, which I think every single parent at Whittier was there, and it was amazing to see the entire staff stay for hours, I mean, it was probably a five-hour event, and almost every staff person was there, and the families were there, and nobody wanted to go home, which I think is just a lovely community expression. And we just had Love Our Schools Week with Trellis, and they were participating with a variety of campuses in Costa Mesa, and my understanding is next year, there will be something in Newport Beach to care for students. And there were tons of teacher luncheons and meals and snacks that were provided, and even something as simple as, you know, there's a really boring white blank shed at Ray, and the students were able to paint and make a beautiful kind of design on it. So, including the, the campus leaders as well was great to see. And then tomorrow is Victoria's Jog-a-thon, so I will be there. And lastly, I just wanted to thank Tamra for giving us the schedule for all of the arts and theater and music events for November and December, so we are well-prepared. Thank you.
All right, it has been a busy month, so there was this youth sports liaison meeting, and as always, Lance has come through and brought speakers to the Estancia pool. So, thank you, Lance, again. I heard it's mostly complete, there's just some little glitches they're working on, so hopefully that gets, gets fixed up. We had a D-LAC meeting a few weeks ago, so that was great to see a lot of, some new parents that are getting engaged and stepping up to run for elected positions in D-LAC. So, that, building the community resident parent leadership is, is really moving along and expanding, so that's good. I just want to thank those CDM students that came to speak about feminine products, AB329. I think they went home already, but they were such great speakers, and I'm so glad to see them here, and I'm sure that we'll follow up and make sure that all of our secondaries have what they need for half of our population. Then, lastly, I think the only other thing I have is that this week is Transgender Awareness Week. And so, one of the stats I was reading, which to me speaks to all of these, you know, quote controversies around health books, if you think about it, in a recent study, only 30% of Americans personally know a transgender person. So, that means that only these three of the people up here know a transgender person, and none of us know one. So, if you think that that's, I mean, that's the, the stat for this country, so it's, it's clear that there's a long way to go in just education and knowledge, and some of the things that might seem scary to people are just unknowns that are, as I think trustee Matoye said, it's just reality. So, that was just a really important stat that I saw, and I thought that explains a lot, if that's, that's the way we have right now. So, that's all I have.
I attended the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation meeting, and it was the, two days after the election, and they wanted to know who won, so I was able to say that, to tell them who won. So, congratulations to all the, the, our new board members and those that we've served with, congrats. And they also were talking about the grants, and they're going to start getting grant readers and having people apply for grants, and also funding of the grants. So, you know, as a board, we always fund ones, so we'll be hitting you up, shaking you guys down for some money. And then, but they also are going to have their, you know, the grant recipient dinner, and trying to plan that and where that's going to be. But they were very excited about our new boards, so that's great. Another thing that I, I was able to attend was a Veterans Day event at Mariners Elementary School, but they had a vet that served in World War II, the Korean War, and the Vietnam War. And he was 96, and Billy got up and spoke, and he said, he goes, "You know, people always ask me what", you know, "People always come up to me and say, 'Thank you for your service', and he goes, "I reply to them, 'You were worth it'", and I think there wasn't a dry eye in the, in the stands, so. And I, you know, you can only imagine what kindergartners through, through sixth grade would probably felt, it was a great assembly, so. Thanks to all our veterans.
I will do my best to get it all at one time, Mrs. Yelsey. If, if only one meeting, I will do my best not to interrupt you. But I was, we attended the Corona Del Mar Modified Science Fair, and I was with trustee Crane and trustee Yelsey, and it was really enjoyable, it was one of those beautiful Chamber of Commerce days, so they were able to hold it outside, and the, their special needs students were explaining all of their projects, just as any good student of science would do, and it was really rewarding and made me feel really great, because our, our middle school science kids at Costa Del Mar are doing just fine. And then, I crossed off everything somebody else already said, but again, I know that trustee Crane was at the transportation event Halloween. Was anybody else, well, thank you, yes, very, it was, it's always so fun to watch. They take all the transportation offices and decorate them for Halloween in a spook, in a haunted house that isn't really very haunted, because you can't scare little tiny children. So, there were, there were, you shouldn't, and we don't, and they're, we give, they provide trick-or-treats for every child that you can't eat. And the poor kids didn't really get to see the decorations, because there were so many people that attended. It was wall-to-wall buckets of people giving out stuff to the kids, which is really fun and rewarding, I enjoyed that. I attended a big Costa Mesa date, trustee Crane and I went to the middle school dual program that advanced from the K6 program that's at College Park for Mandarin, and it was fascinating to be in a room where you really knew nothing, because I don't, I, I know how to say xie xie, which means thank you. That's, I'd be in big trouble if I was in China, because I couldn't say anything. I could make my way with Spanish, but I definitely couldn't do this. And the kids were comfortable, they were comfortable speaking, they spoke in their nat, we were sitting in the back, and they just spoke as if they were naturally speaking in English, rather than the choppy words that you would do. They have been exposed to seven years of verbal Mandarin before they got in the program. So, it was, it was just, it warmed my heart knowing how many graduates from Costa Mesa High School have a seal of biliteracy in Mandarin. And, I mean, I didn't do the numbers, but they're well into the twenties and thirties of kids that graduate with an AP Mandarin, so that was exciting. Then went to the Water Polo CIF quarterfinals and missed the semifinals where we didn't move on, but it was nice to cheer the winning game that we had. And then that night, I went to the middle school's production of Willy Wonka, which you have to smile at, because everybody's a candy man. And so, that was delightful. I attended the Community Alliance meeting along with trustee Orsoilu, which is a Zoom meeting that brings together all of the community partners that we have, or many of the community partners. If you're interested, if you are a community partner person, please contact Sarah Colley to get your name on the list to become one of the community partners that get to come in with a Zoom in. And it's very heartening, it was a focus on community facilitators this time, and how they use the community partners and what they're, what, what they would like to see if we could come up with more, that was really enjoyable. And then that same meeting, that same day was the Art Commission, led by our own Tamra Fairbanks, who is the arts coordinator, so we have to update that, and you're not, she's not just the music coordinator, she's coordinator of all arts. And there was representation of all arts there, which we have production arts, we have music arts, we also have digital arts, we have visual arts, we have ceramics, we have dance, and, and the performing arts and the make-something arts. And they're alive at every school, and they are not as systemic as we would like in a perfect world, but we're getting on the systems train, and that's the whole point, that we're, we're making it endemic in our, in our school district, not just for talk, and that was exciting. And then, trustee Crane said I could talk about the awards. We went to Cal State Fullerton organized an Honor and Educator Award, and we were able to honor both, one of our principals, our principal from Killey Brook, Laura Sosa, was nominated by a family, and so she received an Honor Educator Award. And our summer language program, thank you to Vanessa Galey and Laura Dale-Pash. If you don't have any, if you see nothing else next summer, go see that. It's, it's a collaboration between Cal State Fullerton and Newport Mesa, and it takes newcomer high school students, which has got to be, or secondary students, which has got to be one of the scariest places to be uprooted into a country where you don't speak the language, and you're expected to answer content in the language that is being taught. So, we do an outstanding job, and they appreciated Newport Mesa as a partner, and it was a privilege and honor to be able to applaud our honorees. And last but not least, yesterday, trustee Crane and trustee Yelsey and I, at various times, were at Costa Mesa Middle School to appreciate the Living History members that came to speak to our middle schoolers. And they, I'm sure they say this at every school, but it's very rewarding to hear how, if you are a parent of a middle schooler, how well-behaved your middle schoolers are, and how they listen, and one or two kids in every class will ask those poignant questions that shows that they have an interest in what went on or what's going on to keep our country safe, and how proud they are. And one of the speakers' comments was, "If you learn nothing else, please know that you live in the greatest country in the world. I've been to many, and no matter what our flaws are, we are the best." So, that was a great message for me to hear. I think I'm done. I had a big-
We can always come back.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to be, to be quiet.
Okay, most has been said, but I just wanted to go back to the Costa Mesa Middle School Living History Program yesterday. We were there at different times.
Right.
And in the morning, I was there, and it's Billy Hall who spoke at Mariners. And Billy Hall, who's 96 years old, is one of the very few veterans who is a veteran of World War II, the Korean War, and the Vietnam War.
Unicorn.
And he's pretty amazing, and he speaks at all of our schools. And thanks again to the Freedom Committee of Orange County for providing the veterans, and Denise Wyland, who does a fabulous job of creating this program for all of our schools. We used to do it only at one high school, then all the high schools, now it's down to middle schools and elementary schools, which is really pretty special. And again, when I was there, in fact, I told Principal Quong today, when I saw him, I go, "Those kids were so enthralled by these veterans and what they did. I've never seen middle schoolers so really into listening to their stories about their, their experiences in various wars." So, it was, it was very refreshing to see that, and I look forward to other people on the board going to visit some of these, because I think Denise puts out her schedule, and would love to have people come by and, and visit. Oh, in addition to Water Polo, they're not done yet, but Newport Harbor and CDM are still in football CIFs. We have one representative from the Corona Del Mar team, who is in the semifinals this Friday versus Yorba Linda. TJ Rokus is our student board member, so good luck to you, good luck to the Newport Harbor team. That's all very exciting. And I just want to also just congratulate all the newly elected, I spent a lot of my time since the last meeting, like, with election stuff, but I want to congratulate all the newly elected, that were both newly elected, Lisa Pearson and Michelle Murphy, for being, coming part of this board, you will really, really enjoy it. But I also want to congratulate Michelle Barto and Ashley Anderson for being re-elected. And I think one thing it shows is that people in our community are pleased with the way, with the direction that we are going as a board. And I think that said a lot. So, congratulations to both of you, the rest of the board, working with our new board members, I think it's fabulous, and that's why I feel perfectly fine sailing out.
Oh, I didn't. It was going to be so good. It was so nice to have our family. See, I did it, I did it. But I got a text from my son who lives in Nebraska, and he said, "Mom, I logged into YouTube Newport Mesa, and I watched you, well done, mommy." So, and usually I only get a mommy when he's asking for money. That was really-
Okay, I'm finishing in, my son texted me as well. He watched it, but I also forgot one thing, I too want to really, really thank Rosie, you've been so amazing. Having Rosie support us and help us is having like a personal assistant for each one of us. She's truly amazing, and thank you for everything you've done, it's really, so much appreciated.
And with a smile, almost, almost with a smile.
Thank you.
That is, it's my pleasure to adjourn the meeting at 8:00, 4:00 PM.